All right, good afternoon, everyone. I'd like to call to order our Thursday, April 12th, public meeting of the Missoula County Board of Commissioners. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for So, for public announcements today, we have two resolutions, or two proclamations, I should say, to read. The first is declaring April 2018 Fair Housing Month, and I will kick that off. Whereas Title VII of the Civil Rights Act, commonly known as the Federal Fair Housing Act, which guarantees fair housing for all residents of the United States, was signed into law in April 1968. And whereas the month of April is nationally recognized as Fair Housing Month, in a time to reflect on and reaffirm our national commitment to the ideal that fair housing opportunity is available to everyone in the United States, without regard to race, color, religion, national origin, sex, familial status, and disability. And whereas Missoula County recognizes that all Missourians are free to purchase, rent, finance, and ensure their homes without regard to their race, creed, religion, color, sex, physical or mental disability, age, national origin, or marital status. And whereas Missoula County welcomes this opportunity to celebrate the 50th anniversary of the adoption of the Fair Housing Act, and to reaffirm our commitment to the principle of fair housing for all by strengthening efforts that address discrimination in our communities, supporting programs that will educate the public concerning their rights to equal housing opportunity, and assuring every person their right to live free of the fear of housing discrimination. Therefore, now therefore, we, David Strohmeyer, Jean Curtis, and Nicole Rowley, Missoula County Commissioners, and the state of Montana, do hereby proclaim the month of April 2018 as Fair Housing Month in Missoula County. We encourage all citizens to recognize this celebration for the purpose of improving the quality of life for all residents. Erin, are you the recipient of this item? Okay. Come on up.
Do you want a picture or anything? Or are you just...
Thank you.
Okay.
And our second proclamation is related to National Public Safety Telecommunications Week. Commissioner Curtis.
All right. Whereas public safety was the first service provided by a government to its citizens, the safety and well-being of its citizens continues to be one of the foremost concerns of Missoula County, ensuring that safety and well-being requires the ability to receive calls for help and immediately send responders to provide that help. And whereas 911 is the first critical link in the chain of delivering public safety services, and whereas the safety of those responding to emergencies is also of great concern to Missoula County, and whereas the telecommunications who work in 911 display a superior level of commitment, dedication, and professionalism in accomplishing their mission of receiving calls for help from citizens, dispatching emergency response agencies, and maintaining a communication link with the responders for safety purposes, and whereas those same telecommunications often work extraordinarily long hours and difficult schedules to provide the service to the public and ensure the safety of responders, but often go unrecognized. Now therefore, we, the Missoula Board of County Commissioners, recognize the week of April 18th, April 8th to the 14th, 2018, as National Public Safety Telecommunications Week. We thank the telecommunications in 911 for all their efforts and hours and hard work under very difficult circumstances. The community truly would not be safe without them. We also encourage the community to recognize the importance of the function of 911 and to thank those dedicated individuals in writing. And we have our Emergency Operations Center manager and our 911 dispatch manager, telecommunicator.
Would you like to say anything? Okay.
So, we've already given them the original, but here's a copy.
Thank you very much.
We also sent them some donut, or bagels.
Donut holes?
Donuts.
Yes, I'll second that affirmation. Thank you to all of our 911 staff. You guys do a great job for the community.
Thank you.
Okay. Moving on, is there any public comment on items not on today's agenda? And we have three public hearings that you're probably aware of already. Anything else on people's minds? Okay. Seeing none, our current claims list, this would be for claims of Missoula County as of March 24th, 2018, to April 4th, 2018, received by the Commissioner's Office, and they total $857,820.08. Should also mention to folks, if you have not had an opportunity to sign in when you came in the room, maybe do that when you exit, that helps our staff keep track of who's testifying and who is here. So, our first public hearing, which I will open, is a petition to abandon a county road. Sam Scott from the Clerk and Recorder's Office will present the staff report.
Sam Scott, Clerk and Recorder's Office. Our office received a petition to abandon those certain unused roads and rights-of-way in Tract 1 of COS 6610 located in Section 27 Township 12 North, Range 22 West. The petition fee has been paid in full. The notice of hearing was published twice in the Missourian, and the petition was signed by more than 10 freeholders of the road district, and all affected landowners have been contacted. And that's it for us.
Okay. And this is just opening the public hearing. We're going to have to schedule a road viewing. Steve Nyde, do you have anything to add?
Who specifically brought us the petition?
Okay.
Let's let them speak first.
Okay, yes, glad that you're here. Come on up to the microphone, please state your name for the record, and tell us what you're interested in.
Okay. Danica Nelson, and yeah, my husband Jonathan Updike and I are the owners of the property that is the subject of this petition. Basically, there are three unused roads, or rights-of-way, that go through our property. The first, we're calling the Petitioned County Road, and it was a road that was petitioned in 1895 by C.E. Muzzy, and it was basically to go from Lolo up to Lolo Hot Springs. And it was surveyed, it looks like, early 1900s, about 1900, and Missoula County approved the location of that after the General Land Office recorded it. But there's no evidence that we can see of that road. It may have been used for 10 or 20 years, but it appears that after that, it went unused. There's also the Clearwater Short Line Railway right-of-way that goes through our property, and that was back in the height of the competition between railroads to try and get something to go again, all the way through the Bitterroot Mountains over to Lewiston, Idaho. And there was a bunch of surveying going on, and a bunch of right-of-way was acquired by Clearwater to try to get a railroad up through there. So, in 1910, it appeared that they were going to cease trying to put a railroad through there, and so they started then deeding some of that right-of-way back to Missoula County. Clearwater, it looks like in 1930 is when they actually returned back that right-of-way to Missoula County. It appears that in 1916, that's when the federal highway system proposed that they were going to put a highway through there anyway, and so I think the railroad really was not necessary to go through there. We also have a 400-foot on either side, so Highway 12 goes up through there, on 400 feet on either side of there, there is a right-of-way that was deeded to Missoula County, and that was for the purposes of the public highway. And in portions of our property, that was deeded from Anaconda. Other portions of it, it was deeded from Northern Pacific. And both of those, it appear, have right to reverter if that was ever ceased to be used for a public highway. We know right now, we've got Highway 12 going up through there, and so when that highway was established, they established a right-of-way for that highway, and that's well within this 400 feet. So, this 400 feet that Missoula County still owns exceeds well beyond what is actually the Highway 12 right-of-way right now. So, there are basically three things. So, there's the Muzzy Road, you know, the old one, there's this 400 feet that Missoula County still owns of that right-of-way, and then there's the Clearwater that was abandoned long, long, long ago. So, those are the three things that we're now seeking to get resolved and abandoned so that we can clear up the title and hopefully build a house there without running across this right-of-way issue. Is there anything else you want to add to that?
Okay, thank you. Yeah, questions?
I was just trying to tell from the map, so does Highway 12 cut through the property now, then? Or is it located somewhere else sometimes there?
Well, so our, the southern boundary of our property is basically the northern boundary of Highway 12's right-of-way.
Okay, so it shows the whole section, but your property is to the north.
Exactly. It's Tract 1, so it's that northern property. Yep.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Nyde.
Yeah, Steve Nyde, Surveyor's Office. I'd like to add one critical element that Danica left out, and that was, at the end of, at the end of the petition, she, they graciously offer an easement for a pedestrian bicycle way along the north side of that Highway 12, in exchange for you guys abandoning the excess right-of-way. The right-of-way for the state highway has been marked via that survey, so that when we go out to look at it, I think it'll be helpful to see where the existing state highway right-of-way is, and what there may be for useful space north of that for a walkway. There may be portions of that where the topography just is not conducive to a walkway. So, I guess what I'm saying is, the viewers that go out there may need to spend more than a few minutes looking at this and kind of taking stock of the situation.
Should we wear appropriate footwear for such...
I'm assuming the snow's gone by now? So, whenever, I don't know who's up next, but whoever wants to schedule, I'll be glad to go along.
Okay. Commissioner Curtis.
Oh, I just had a question about, do we, I'm guessing that there was a big wide highway right-of-way because they thought someday they may make a wider road. Have you talked to the highway department at all? I don't believe there's any plans to widen Highway 12 to four lanes or anything.
Not that I know of. I could certainly visit with them and see what they have to say. That original 400-foot wide, well, the original was the petition 60-foot-wide right-of-way. They've indicated there's no evidence of that. I'll go out and poke around and see if I can find anything. But that 400-foot-wide railroad right-of-way, that would have probably been just consistent with what a railroad would have thought they needed because of the terrain to get through there.
Okay, so the 400 was part of the railroad one? Okay.
No?
Yeah, come on up to the microphone if you could, please.
Jonathan Updike. I think when we trace back all the history here, the 400 feet had nothing to do with the railroads, but it was, is envisioned that a state highway would be built, and usually in a mountainous area, they identify a corridor and then build the highway, and then go back and say, okay, this is the right-of-way that we really need for this US-12 highway. And I think that's what they did. And so, in a mountainous area, you don't know, it could be over here, it could be over there, you have the creek, you have some steep slopes. So, I believe the 400 feet just provided a corridor to try to fit the highway within. The highway was built, what, in 1948? What is US-12 today? And then, they, you know, state, basically, the transaction took place where they established their own, their ownership in the actual right-of-way of Highway 12. What just, what never happened was, the owners of the land never petitioned to have what was excess, what was essentially not needed, was never petitioned to have it removed, and that's essentially what we're doing today, since there's a beautiful highway.
Okay, thanks, Jonathan. Steve, did you have something else you wanted to add? You look poised there. Okay.
No, I'll contact MDT, just to make sure that there's nothing in there near future, but...
Okay, thank you. So, I guess we'll need to look at our schedules to see if one or multiples of us are going to go out.
John suggested that we might all want to go. Normally, one commissioner goes, and it's my turn next, but do you guys want to join?
Well... I'm certainly not saying all three of you need to go, but, you know, considering the extra public pedestrian easement, and, you know, you may just want to have a mind's eye. I know you're busy, and so that isn't something that I say you have to do.
Okay. Well, we're probably going to need to look at our schedule and see what we can shoehorn in, so...
Do you have your contact information?
Okay.
And do you want, is there anybody, any of your other neighbors that might want to join in your survey or anything? Okay.
Okay. Well, we'll be in touch as far as when we'll be doing the viewing, and when we'll reconvene back here to take up the item.
Do you want to pick a date to reconvene so that we don't have to renotice?
Sarah, what do you think?
It should be short.
May 24th, okay.
Are you guys in any big rush? Okay.
So, let's...
Plenty of time to get out there.
Come on up to the mic. Thanks, Jonathan.
So, we're not looking at any maps that would probably, we could project, we have lots of maps, but we are in the process of working with Missoula County Building Division on some building permits for a garage structure that's, that could be impacted by the right-of-way. We don't know if the county would say, hey, we're not going to issue a building permit because this right-of-way exists, but we're not, right now, it looks like the structure, our garage wouldn't sit inside the right-of-way. I mean, it's inside our property line. It's just, the septic drain field would likely be between the property line and Missoula County's right-of-way, because the Missoula County's right-of-way extends about 130 feet into the property right now.
Okay.
So, then, just a note on the trail, yeah, we're supporters of trails, we like to hike and bike, and we, you know, like Steve said, a lot of the eastern portion of the property is fairly, fairly steep slope, come the property, in fact, the right-of-way line is up on the slope in some cases, and it might be hard to see where those pins are, but it should be all flagged. Then the area that, there's a Sheldon Creek comes through, and it's, there's maybe about 1,000 feet that is more level, and so I guess we could talk about what would be needed in the flatter area, I think maybe a narrower section of trail would be appropriate, steeper slope. We're not planning to do anything with the steep slope areas anyways, but you might need a little more space there to build a trail if you did, so...
Okay.
So, is your garage permit, is your garage going to have a bathroom, so you need the septic?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, it would be essentially an apartment over a garage.
Okay, so, I mean, we can probably, what's the 26th, is that one really full? Uh-huh. Oh, that's right.
Yeah. Cola?
Thank you.
Oh, so, should we just lock in the 24th of May, if that will work for you? And we'll make it a point to get out there and view it between now and then? Okay, thank you, and we'll just keep the public hearing open. Steve? Oh, you're just getting ready to leave? Okay, I thought you were reaching for the microphone again. Okay, thank you. Okay, our second public hearing today is a family transfer, the Larry Johnson family transfer. We have a staff report from Lauren. Y'all can stick around for the entire meeting, or we will not be offended if you want to split out, too.
Okay, you're government in action.
Go ahead.
Lauren Miller, Planner, Community and Planning Services. Here's the property location of the family transfer. The property is located south of Waldo Road, west of Highway 93. The current lot is approximately 21.44 acres in size and is unzoned. Two residential land use designations apply to the parcel. One recommends six dwelling units per acre, the other 16 dwelling units per acre. This proposed transfer does not exceed the density that's recommended. Here's a closer view of the property. The parent parcel currently has a single-family residence, a triple-wide mobile home, along with three outbuildings and a shop. The proposed parcel layout shows that access will be provided from Waldo Road, which runs north of both the tracks. Here's the current COS of the property. Tract 1 of COS 5603 was created through a boundary line relocation exemption in 2004. Tract 1 is a little over 20 acres, and the surrounding two tracks are a little over 20 acres and close to 60 acres in size. This slide shows the draft survey of the proposal. The proposed transfer would result in two total tracks, approximately 1.4 acres in size and 20.04 acres in size. The west side of the property, Tract 1B, will be held by Larry Johnson and will include the single-family residence, outbuildings, and the shop. The east portion, Tract 1A, to be transferred to Larry Johnson's son, Jeffrey Johnson, and will include the triple-wide mobile home. The rebuttable presumptions and general evasion criteria were reviewed in the staff analysis for the proposal. None of the rebuttable presumptions were triggered or applicable to the proposal. A few of the general evasion criteria that were applicable to the application that the staff noted emboldened the report. One of the criteria that were triggered was if the claimant had been involved in prior exemptions involving the original tract or other tracks. Larry Johnson has been involved in two exemptions prior to this application. The applicant applied for a boundary line relocation exemption in 1996, and another in 2004 to create the tract we're looking at today. Both of those were approved. Another criteria that was triggered with the application was that the exempted tract shares a common road with four other platted lots, and the new tract has a comparable size to the nearby Moll and Meadows subdivision tracks. And the final general evasion criteria that was triggered with the application is that there likely would have been significant conditions of approval if brought forward as a minor subdivision. Some of those likely would have been impact on public health and safety due to the proximity of O'Keefe Creek. The parcel is outside of the mapped floodplain, but due to flood risk, homes within neighboring subdivisions have become non-buildable lots, and some buildable lots have basements that are prohibited. The possibility exists that impacts on agriculture, the natural environment, and wildlife would have been identified with further review and agency comments. Staff is recommending that the request by Larry Johnson to utilize the family transfer to create and transfer one parcel to his son, Jeffrey Johnson, be approved. And I have a few questions for the applicant, if you want to come forward.
Come on up to the microphone if you could state your name for the record, please.
I'm Larry Johnson. I live at 10515 Waldo Williams Road in Missoula.
Perfect. Did you buy the property with the intent of dividing it?
I did not. I bought it in 1993.
93, okay. Do you or your transferees intend to transfer the property within the next year?
No.
Have you talked to anyone at the county about going through subdivision review?
Not in regard to the current situation, no.
Will the property be developed?
No.
Will the recipient of the property be residing on the property?
Probably not.
Okay. Thank you.
The recipient is a doctor, and he lives in Laurel, Montana, practices in buildings.
Okay. Great.
Mr. Johnson, is there anything else you want to add or elaborate on?
Yeah, I'm going to be 80 years old, and three years ago, my wife tipped over, and I kind of got the idea that maybe I should prepare a little bit for my heirs and so forth, and I have two children, four stepchildren, and I've attempted to refinance my obligations on this property, and been told by the lending institution, several of them, that I couldn't do that because there, none of them were willing to issue a new mortgage on their property because there is a triple-wide house on real estate. In order to do any financing, it would be necessary to split that triple-wide off of the deed for my property, and then I could mortgage my house and the land it sits on. And if that were to occur, the triple-wide itself and the land it sits on would also be mortgaged-able property. In view of the fact that somewhere along the line, I'm going to tip over, my kids are going to have to sell that property, I mean, I've got a host of heirs. Some will share, some won't, and in order for them to divide that property, they may have to sell it, or mortgage it, or do some other thing on my demise, and I'm trying to get that all straightened up before anything happens to me. I don't intend to die here anytime, but none of us do. So, basically, that's what I'm trying to do, is clean up my own estate mess and get things organized a little better.
Okay. Thank you. This is a public hearing, is there any public comment on this item? Okay, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Questions from the commission?
I would move that we approve the request by Larry Johnson to use the family transfer exemption to create and transfer one parcel to his son, Jeffrey Johnson.
Second.
Is there any additional discussion on the item? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye. Okay. There we go. Okay, our third and final public hearing for today is a Buildings for Rent Proposal of 1540 Thayer Road. Staff report, Mr. Worley.
For the record, Tim Worley with caps, and this is a Buildings for Lease or Rent project on Thayer Road, west of Lolo. Just as a reminder, Buildings for Lease or Rent projects are multiple building or unit projects on a single parcel. The last time you saw one of these, we were dealing with storage units, but this is dealing with a fourplex. The property is located about seven miles west of Lolo, south of Highway 12 on Thayer Road. This is the roughly 10-acre property, which currently has a single-wide mobile, a stick-belt home, and formerly had a triplex on the eastern edge of the property. This is the current uses here, whoops. And moving on to the site plan showing the fourplex here, there's a proposal for eight parking spaces along Thayer Road, and again, there's an existing dwelling unit, actually two dwelling units, one's a single-wide mobile and a stick-belt home. Just some general findings coming... Just some general findings coming out of the staff report. Thayer Road's a county-maintained road. The fourplex is planned for the former triplex site. We didn't find any adverse impacts with this proposal. The growth policy recommends residential at this location at a density of one home per five acres. The density on this parcel has been higher than that for at least a couple of decades and with the fourplex, there will be one additional dwelling unit added to the parcel overall compared to the former density. As far as sanitation is concerned, there will be an increase in number of dwelling units. This will have to go through sanitation review. It will also likely have to go through a mobile home park licensing because there are a total of four single-wide mobile homes between the property in question and the property immediately to the south, which we understand is in the same ownership. I would like to offer a correction under water and wastewater. We had essentially an erroneous conclusion. I would like to add the following conclusion of law related to water and wastewater, that water and wastewater systems are subject to the review of the city-county health department under Section 5E of the Buildings for Lease or Rent regulations. Just have a couple of conditions, that the fourplex be substantially compliant with the submitted plans with the building permit to be reviewed by county public works. Again, staff recommends approval of this buildings for lease or rent project.
Thank you.
Do we need to amend then?
I believe it's page four. So it's conclusion of law number one, page four, under. Water, wastewater and solid waste facilities. Well, that's, yeah, that was the template that I didn't, I didn't pick that piece out of there.
I am glad there are no mini warehouses proposed today. Okay, thank you. Would the applicant or applicant's representative like to speak? Come on up.
Andy Short, I represent Territorial Land Works. I'm a land use consultant. I, I help my clients develop their property. Yeah, it's pretty straightforward. Triplex is being torn down and a new fourplex is being built. Dave Edgles here was, was one of the representatives of, one of the representatives of the property, who's my client. Steve Rutherford is an accountant, so he's extremely busy right now, but he's owned, I believe he's owned the property since the 80s and he's always gone and gotten the proper licensing, always. All the, all the, all the buildings are permitted through the health department. They all have, they all have issued permits. That's all I got. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Edgel or anyone, anyone else want to comment on this?
The only thing I would really say is that we're demolishing a very poorly-built triplex that was basically falling down and shouldn't have been occupied and putting a nice fourplex in its place. So it's a benefit.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead and close the public hearing. Questions from the commission? More emotion?
How many mobile homes constitutes a mobile home park? Three?
I believe it's two.
Okay. Thanks. And I, I like this project, like you said, replacing something old and dilapidated with something nice and new is always great. And I also like seeing multifamily developments in rural areas. And although it doesn't necessarily match the exact density planning, we also find in impact number nine, that the gross density can be flexibly applied to the result in a variety of lot sizes with the goal of retaining some large for resource protection and ag and I think this is, although it's not in strict compliance, it doesn't have to be and it meets the intent of, of the growth policy and I think it's a great project. So thanks for bringing it forward. Can I move then? Is that it? Okay.
Wording back up there so we make sure we.
Oh, sure.
Thank you, Tim.
I would move to approve the Buildings for Lease or Rent project at 15420 Thayer Road as shown on the site plan based on the finding and fact of conclusions of law found in the staff report with the amendment to number one to read. Water and wastewater systems are subject to the review of the city-county health department under Section 5E of the Buildings for Lease or Rent regulations and approved subject to conditions of approval.
Any further discussion? I would concur, it looks like a good project. So, all in favor? Aye. Okay. Thank you. So is there any additional business to come before the commission at this time? Seeing none, we will be in recess.